I'd like to shout at you and turn my microphone on, how's that? Shows I've been on holiday. Right, okay, the minutes are okay, thank you very much. Emma, apologies for absence, any substitutes?
Yes, we have apologies from councillors Carol Coburn and Michael Goodridge, there are no substitutes.
Thank you very much. Any declarations of interest before the meeting? Any last minute declarations councillors? No, thank you very much. We will then move on to questions by members of the public and I gather Mr James Remnant has a question.
Thank you Mr Chairman. My question is relating to the grounds maintenance contract which is due for renewal this year and is presently with Glendale. And following on from the Green Paper, a new deal for social housing and from the council's own security review, council pride and prejudice, where poor maintenance outside areas was highlighted as an issue and also comments were made there would seem to be less pride taken in how properties and land around them are maintained. What provision has been made to involve tenants in the tendering process and if not involved, tenants should they be invited to comment upon the service as it stands? And say what they would like to see in the tender document and express their expectations for this service?
Thank you very much for your question Mr Remnant, this has been put to the officers and I can reply to you as follows. The maintenance of the housing services green spaces is included in the council's ground maintenance contract procured and managed by Waverley's Parks and Countryside Service. Serious consideration was given for the housing service to let its own grounds maintenance contract, but this was not found to be feasible. The head of housing operations has ensured that tenants' comments and expectations have been taken into account in the development and drafting of the new grounds maintenance contract. Tenants were given the opportunity to express their views in the STAR (satisfaction) 2017 survey and at summer social events held across the borough in August 2018. In the STAR survey, only 67% of tenants were satisfied with the grounds maintenance contract. All parties acknowledge the level of satisfaction is too low and the tenants believe the appearance of the estate is important. Increasing tenant satisfaction and meeting expectations are central to the tender process that is currently underway for the grounds maintenance contract. Tenant insights have guided the development of a range of customer satisfaction KPIs for the housing land. An annual incentive payment of up to £20,000 can be paid to the contractor should they attain the required performance improvement. Housing tenant satisfaction, to be measured annually, will contribute up to 35% of the performance criteria on which this bonus will be based. The procurement process will be completed by the end of May with the new contract commencing on the 1st of November 2019. I hope if not totally satisfying you, it has given you some comfort.
Well, yes, I understand it, but interesting comments back, but still, thank you very much indeed.
Okay. Right, any questions from members?
None received.
None received, thank you very much.
Chair, can I just ask if that response is written down somewhere for us?
We even try to please our councillors. Okay, item six repairs and maintenance contract, Annalisa would you like to introduce this?
Thank you. So those of you who have been on the committee for a long time will remember that back in April 2017, the executive agreed for the housing service to procure responsive repairs and voids contract, planned works, two contracts, one for kitchen and bathroom, one for windows and doors, and a range of building works procurement we were going through. So this report provides you with an update and closes that procurement project that we've been working on for 18 months. So you received an update in January and since then we've completed the comprehensive piece of work with our consultants FFT. We assessed all the tender documentation that came through, we held clarification meetings, we held interviews with planned worked contractors and we also went through the final tender assessments and I'd like to thank the tenants who were involved in that process. There was a lot of paper to read and a lot of assessment criteria to look at and we ended up sort of having it a bit of fun I think. But it was a really intense time and the work was diligently gone through. And that ended up with us getting preferred bidders agreed towards the end of the summer. Then we had to go out through all the legal process to our leaseholders and we did leaseholder notification. We had a slight delay in the project just with the timings of interviews, but there was no adverse impact on the overall project. We'd built in such a long time for mobilisation that we went ahead steadily, thoroughly and according to all our legal guidance we needed to follow through. So the contracts were awarded and signed in September and October. So you'll see on page, bear with me while I scroll, on page 20 that the responsive repairs and voids contract was awarded to Mighty, the planned works for kitchens and bathrooms was awarded to Gilgan Martins and unfortunately we didn't progress with the windows and doors planned works. We withdrew from the procurement process after the final assessment because the prices submitted didn't match our budget proposals, so further work needed to be done on that and we're going to do a second procurement process starting next financial year. And then we've got a range of people who were awarded framework contracts for the building works, redecorations, roofing, drainage works and general building works. So once the project was completed and we'd signed the contracts, it was full steam ahead into mobilisation. But we also wanted to take time and reflect the work that we'd done over the last 18 months, two years. So we did a post-project review on the 26th of November and identified some of the successes and some of the issues of the project as well. And that information is really helpful for the service moving forward to take those lessons learned and put them into the next procurement programme. As we did the procurement project, there were lots of changes in staff, there was a restructure of the property maintenance, property services team, but none of that had a big impact on the project, we managed to keep on track and deliver the project. There was a change and a slight concern in November 19, you'll recognise that I said that we'd awarded the responsive repairs contract to Mighty and Mighty Group were taken over, but the parent company changed from Mighty to Mears and we've got Vicky here today who's going to explain that a little further for you. But essentially the Mighty Group split, we continued to work with Mighty on the framework project, but responsive repairs and voids, the Mighty Group have changed their name to MPS and Vicky will confirm details about MPS. We had legal and financial reviews of that change and I'm pleased to say that there's no need for the contract to be changed and we're continuing with mobilisation and the contract as planned. It was something that we needed to investigate at the time when the change in parent company, but the procurement process had gone ahead completely according to all the rules. We've looked at the financial and legal information, we've met with MPS and we're delighted to continue with the project. So the other thing to mention is that we've communicated with tenants throughout this process through Waverley Homes and People and tenant events. And the last event we held was on the 15th of February, we held a meet the contractor event and that was really successful with tenants coming to meet MPS and Gilgan Martins. Gilgan Martins had a display of the type of kitchens that people would be able to have installed if they're on our replacement programme and it was a real good opportunity for tenants to meet MPS, talk about issues they've had with responsive repairs in the past and get some assurance about how we're going to be delivering things in the future. So without further ado, we'll pass over to Vicky Fordham Lewis who will explain a little bit to you about MPS and the Waverley contract.
Good evening, thank you for inviting me this evening. As Annalisa said, I'm Vicky Fordham Lewis, the MD. Sorry, technology, is that better, can you hear me? I'm still Vicky Fordham Lewis, I'm still the MD of MPS, good evening again. I've got a short presentation for you today, just to talk you through the MPS business structure and what happened to our business in November of last year and then looking at how the journey's gone so far with Waverley Borough Council in terms of the procurement and the on route road to mobilisation which is a mere 34 or 33 days away, fast approaching us. I'll spend a short while just chatting about the DNA of MPS and why it's important that we keep that. A little bit about the business and its size, our new brand, but most importantly our commitment to Waverley. So how we are structured, when we started our engagement with Waverley in terms of the procurement journey that started in April last year, Mighty Property, the Mighty Group PLC was our parent company, they're a big company, they've got about, they had actually 33 different trading entities underneath them. Their biggest stakeholder is in the FM sector where they turn over about £1 billion in revenues and the property section was a smaller size of the business, turning over about £120 million a year. Our property business was separated into two companies, Mighty Property Management, which just housed basically directors and leaders, and MPS UK Limited, which is the main contracting company for all of our customers. It has all of our liabilities in there in terms of insurance, in terms of pensions and it houses about 1,200 people who are employed with us. On the 16th of November last year, it was announced to the market that the Mighty Group was selling off its property section of its group of companies. The group of companies that were involved in the sale was MPS Services UK Limited and the plan initially was to transfer that business and just slide it across to a new parent company who would become Mears. Unfortunately, due to the pension liabilities that were held in the MPS UK company, we actually created a new company so we could just transfer all of the benefits and the people into that organisation. So some of our customers and staff have found that quite confusing why we actually set up another company. It was largely down to the fact that the MPS UK Limited business had some liabilities in it that we couldn't indemnify against. On the 30th of November, all of our people and all of the people delivering the services for our customers across the country transferred into MPS Housing. In terms of how it works, there really isn't that much change, Mighty was our parent and now Mears is our parent. In terms of MPS Housing, we're a separate legal entity, we have our own separate board of directors, our own governance, our own brand. And we work in different markets to that of our parent, our parent is moving more into the larger scale construction activities, they do a great deal of care and repair work and they're a registered social landlord in their own right. MPS Housing are going to stick at what we do best, which is delivering repairs and maintenance services to local businesses and local councils and registered providers across the country. It's been quite a journey through any procurement exercise and Waverley is no different, just in terms of the sheer volume of work and effort and commitment on behalf of the client and the contractor and also the customers in engaging and going through that process. And that roadmap there just gives you sort of some idea of the key milestones that we journey through together to get where we are today, approaching rather quickly the mobilisation of the contract. In our terms, on the 18th of November, we announced the exchange of contracts. But we've been very firm with all of our customers and without fail we've continued to deliver business as usual. The change of parent company has had no impact on frontline activities. As you can imagine, it's more to do with the intricacies of plugging into a parent in terms of things like finance, treasury and back office IT. Whilst we were rebranding MPS, it was really important for us to understand what our customers think and feel of us. So we went out to a number of our key customers across the country and Waverley actually were part of that survey and that report back to us to understand why people like to work with us and we gained some really invaluable feedback during that exercise that helped us redefine and recreate our vision and values for our business, which I'll talk through in a moment. And that was really critical for us because we'd always been part of this big group in Mighty and we'd always sort of taken on their vision and values and yes, we did align to them in quite a nice way. But actually, it was really important to actually feed that in from what our customers think of us. It was really, really important for me as well, I know that I've got lots of exceptional people. I think when I drafted this presentation, there was actually a significant amount of snow in the south-east and people delivering gas services and walking to work, so I know day in, day out I've got exceptional people. I know that exceptional people work in this organisation as well, so, but it was really important to understand what that translated to into visions and values and what we wanted the culture to be like. And what's really important is that we don't lose this if we get bigger and that we grow because what people really like is that we're accessible, we're visible, we come into organisations, we sit and talk to the people that are doing the work and we're happy to go and talk to customers and go out and meet them. And for me personally, MPS has been a bit of a journey for me, I've been with the organisation for nearly nine years and the opportunity to take it away from the Mighty brand and create it in its own brand is of extraordinary excitement for me personally and I'm very excited to do that. We set our values and they're around four core themes with an overriding theme. The ultimate thing is that we're people, people, we like to work with people, we like to get under the skin of things, we like to understand what's going on. We're always open to new ideas and innovation, we don't think we know best, we don't know what's best unless we sit down and listen to what people need. And that's where we found our partnerships work a lot better, where we're really open to innovation and change and to helping direct businesses and organisations and services into new ways and not afraid to change new ideas. It's really important for me personally that we keep everybody safe and that's not just our staff, that's your customers and that's the people within the borough because we recognise that every activity we do has an impact on somebody somewhere in the organisation. And last, but by no means least, we are full of integrity and that's my personal favourite. My daughter asked me what integrity meant when she was about 10 and she was struggling with her English homework. And the way I explained it to her is we do the right thing Molly, even when no one's watching and I'm really proud that that's been translated into one of our visions and values. It's really important to us that we engrain ourselves in the fabric of the communities in which we work. We want people to reach out to us, we want them to know that they can trust us and that we are adaptable to the services that they require. We want to be dependable in the delivery of your services, that's very important to us. Just in terms of numbers, MPS is a national company. Our farthest outlying contract is in north-east Scotland in Aberdeen. It's rather bleaker there than I must say than Waverley is, it's rather lovely here. We have 1,200 people working on direct operational roles. We do over quarter of a million reactive repairs a year, we do another 25,000 out of hours throughout the night servicing some of the more emergency type of repairs. We service 60,000 gas boilers from our MPS Energy Division over in Orpington. We look after 30,000 homes that rely on communal heating. And in terms of kitchens and bathrooms, we put about 8,000 of those in a year across the country. This, I'm delighted to say, will be the new brand and you'll be seeing that on the streets of Waverley in the forthcoming weeks. We've redesigned the logos and we've got, I think the vans are all on order with the new livery and all the uniforms are on order as well and we were pleased to demonstrate some of that at a meet the contractor event that we hosted with Waverley on the 15th. What's really important is that the commitments and the promises that we made throughout the dialogue process and throughout the bidding process and when we then rewrote the bid following the dialogue sessions, that they haven't changed. It's exactly the same service and exactly the same people that are going to get to run it. And here are just a few of the commitments that we've made in relation to the mobilisation and the bid overall. Is that we recognise this is a new contract and a new start and some customers and some people in the organisation have quite rightly said, well you've got people coming that have worked here for a long time, they're touping over and me and my team will be working really hard on creating a new culture within the teams up there and teams here at Waverley have been really engaged in helping to set the tone of that. There's a new change of leadership, we do things differently to the outgoing contractor. I told you lightly about our vision and values, but we really try and engrain that into everything we do, whether it's in their one-to-ones, their performance management reviews, the toolbox talks. The mobilisation is well underway and heading for a good launch. They've taken a view of all the lessons learned and started to remove any waste. We've engaged with customers to understand things that they didn't enjoy about the service to see how we can weave that in. And we're having a complete quality, safety, health and environmental review on the contract to ensure that we can pick up where the outgoing contract has left off but also enhance the service that we're providing. We've already committed to a number of social value and customer engagement activities and we pride ourselves on the delivery of those across our business. But just three of them that we've promised is to reduce telephone contact by 5% in 2020, that's working in coordination with Waverley. We commit to consistently meet or exceed the 96% customer satisfaction target and we've got vast employment and skills area commitments in terms of apprenticeships, work placements and upskilling. Ultimately, our overriding performance, because our overriding promise, because we all understand that this will only make the partnership stronger, is to work in partnership with one another. Thank you.
Right, well thank you very much. Committee members, any questions, comments?
Sorry, just briefly, and I'm sorry if I missed it, but one of your aims was to reduce telephone contact by 5%. Can you advise me how that's going to benefit the clients, the customers? Or are you expecting people perhaps to deal with you online?
I think the default position when we think about reducing telephone contact is by making people raise repairs online and yes, that is an option and that's certainly something we could explore through IT innovation. But one of the biggest causes of people telephoning a call centre for repairs will be 35% of the call demand will be because people will be chasing up something that hasn't happened. They'll be checking an appointment or they want to change it. And the majority of those are in our gift, if we tell them what's happening next and we give them an appointment that they want, then they won't have to do any of those things. So in terms of working together, process mapping the flows to make sure that operatives are explaining the next step, that's an easy way to reduce telephone contact.
Just to say we wish you well with this, it's dealing with people and you have our very best wishes.
Thank you.
I speak for them all.
Right, thank you Chairman. You mentioned a lot of staff will be touping across to the new organisation. What is the breakdown of the organisation that's going to be looking after our contract going to be in terms of those that will come in from Mighty and those that will be former Mears employees who know the patch well? And it's a real challenge getting people to live and work in Waverley because of the high cost of living.
Yes, yeah, no, we appreciate that. So we've got a legal responsibility under the TP transfer laws to actually bring people in if the jobs match. So the majority of the frontline staff are coming across, which is why it's so important to get the induction and the cultural alignment right from day one and really set the scene on what we expect moving forward. In terms of operational support and leadership, Keith Dadswell who's here today, he's the operations director, he'll be responsible for the overall running of the contracts in terms of health and safety and operational performance. We have a commercial manager who's been involved in the mobilisation, Dave Warner, as well as all our other centralised support, so Becky O'Donnell, some of the team will have already met her, she's our social value manager, she's been engaged in the apprenticeship work, IT, HR, finance, quality assurance, health and safety and all of those resources will come in and they stay for the life of the contract, which is something else our customers like, they're on call and able to keep getting involved.
I just wondered how you are going to, how the new service will monitor the customer satisfaction and empower the tenants and engage them as well within the process and sort of not refer back to what was delivered perhaps previously?
I think in terms of quality of work, we have varying measures in place to ensure that quality is high, whether that's during work inspections, post-work inspections or taking the feedback from customer surveys that take place. And voids is always a key one as well, so we inspect every void before it's handed over to ensure that it goes across in the correct condition. Equally, we run a report to identify any repairs that are raised within 28 days of a void going back because actually if that's been done to the standard we'd hoped, notwithstanding any unforeseen emergency, we'd expect that to be fed back to us. We also use our call centre staff, so when they're closing down the jobs with the operatives or if they're ringing to make new appointments, then we're asking for feedback at that point in terms of quality and satisfaction with the repair.
Thank you Chair. First of all, thank you for attending that event a couple of weeks, it was a couple of weeks ago now, I think. It seemed to be quite a good turnout. So my first question is, did you get good feedback from residents? Were there any questions or comments that they raised to you? And the second question is regarding the company split, you're not carrying any risk with that unindemnified element, is that all pension?
First, in answer to your first question, thank you. Yeah, it was a really, really enjoyable day. Got to meet a number of customers and tenants from across the borough, so it was really, really good and I thought it was very well attended, so yeah, it was very good. In terms of the risk in the old operating company, no, that's completely siloed, it's completely set aside and actually MPS Housing hasn't taken anything with it. It largely relates to a plumber's pension scheme, which yes, I believe, yeah, so that's stayed in that particular legal entity and that's nothing to do with our structure. Thank you.
First Chairman.
Thank you for your presentation. Could I go back to customer satisfaction? Because this is something we have always suffered from as a bit of a problem. What point are you going to ask the customer how satisfied they are? Then I'd like to come back to...
We engage with the customers at the end of the repair, so we've got an option to telephone the customer at that point to ask them how the repair's gone. Equally, if we have operatives on site when they're making follow-up appointments, we're doing that at that point as well, so we have that option to do it. Some of the best insight we've had into causes of complaints, formal complaints and service grumbles is actually by analysing what the reason of the complaint is and understanding the root cause of that. And often if you can delve into the root cause and you can change the behaviours at the front end. So there's an important sort of two-pronged approach really to it, I think. So it's getting it right at the beginning, making sure that the operative's doing the right thing at the right time and then equally it's actually making sure that if it does go wrong, we hold our hands up, we apologise and we get it fixed, we understand what the root cause is.
Sorry, can I just add that you're used to seeing the data we have from Volanta, which is the independent telephone survey. We will continue to do that with the new contract, so you'll be able to benchmark very clearly from the old contract to the new contract and watch hopefully an increase in satisfaction.
Thank you very much Chairman, that was really the important issue I was getting to because our experience in the past has been that if our repair company is also doing the monitoring of the customer, it doesn't always come out right and we discovered that it was better when we had an independent customer survey done, that we actually found the true answers and asking the customer at the point the repair is finished is not necessarily the right time. We discovered that, so it's something we will be keeping an eye on.
To answer that, I totally agree, but equally I think there's an opportunity when we see that things aren't going as smoothly as possible, that that early intervention can really solve quite a lot of unhappiness and dissatisfaction with the service.
First of all, fantastic that you're doing sort of root cause analysis on that. Do you intend to or do you with any other authorities share any of that root cause data? And also do you have any targets for customer satisfaction feedback?
So in terms of, sorry, in terms of all of our branches, we manage and understand the root cause of any complaints that we get because it can be down to just someone not following a simple process or it could be down to actually someone's not a very good operative or something. So it's important that we understand that. We share that with all of our clients. So the data that's, if taken into this, we'd be sharing that and working in partnership. And we believe in being open and transparent so we can say this has happened and this is what we're doing about it.
Thank you, Chairman. Can I just come back with a couple of questions on the non-mighty parts of the paper to officers? Firstly, the windows and doors, we're told we're going to be carrying out a procurement exercise next year. Can you have a bit more detail about how long that's going to take and what impact it's going to have on the forward work programme? And the second question was during the scrutiny work that was done on letting the new round of contracts a couple of years ago now, one of the challenging areas that we identified was that actually in places, we actually have a shortage of technical staff to interface with the contractors when the contracts are being administered. And that was actually the contractors who fed back that one of the biggest challenges working with Waverley was that there weren't always the knowledgeable people available to keep the contracts running smoothly. So would officers care to comment about our current position in terms of having the staff to do that interfacing work so that things run smoothly? Thank you.
Shall I respond to councillor Seeburn? Respond to councillor Seeburn? So in terms of technical staff, we are still finding it a challenge to do recruitment. Just been out for advert again for surveyors and the response has been minimal. Heather has put in a number of measures to actually grow our own people. And so we've got people on development programmes to get qualified as surveyors and other parts of the teams are doing similar things. So there's no easy answer, I don't think, in terms of, we are still finding a challenge. And that does hinder us in terms of moving works on, especially around the capital works. So I think, all I can say is that Heather is constantly looking at different ways to get people into the organisation. When we get people in, we can keep them and it's getting people in the door. That's a challenge.
Our retention rate's really low, so our attrition rate's really low actually. So that's a good thing, but it's just getting them through the door in the first place is a challenge.
So the windows contract, we haven't got a large budget next year for windows. So we weren't intending to do a big windows programme because for the last couple of years, especially this current year, we're actually finishing off a big programme of window replacements. And so the budget is minimal and our procurement time in terms of getting a new contract, we haven't set that project going.
We haven't set that because we need to...
If you're going to speak, you'd better use the microphone because otherwise you won't go on record and we won't have the faintest idea what you said.
And you will understand me. We are currently reassessing all our asset management and the stock data at the moment to make sure that that's reconciled, to provide a proper programme of works. And that's one of the notes that was picked up from the scrutiny that really I think why we didn't get a good value for money contract coming back was because of the vagueness in the contract. We were too broad. So we feel that getting our data right in the first instance will then help us target the right contractors to want to work with us.
Any more questions, councillors? Or are we, councillor Townsend?
Just a quick one. With the windows programme, I'm not sure quite how it works, but are the tenants kept informed of these forward programmes? Were some tenants thinking they were going to get the windows replaced and now they've told they've got to wait another year? So I just wondered how that engagement is between Waverley and the tenants. Thank you.
But this is an area that we need to improve on in terms of telling people when we expect to do works, change major components within their homes. It's something that we've not really progressed going forward. We have, as we mentioned, there has been a restructure within the property services team, which included now having a strategic asset manager. He's only been in post since August. And part of his role would be actually be clear on where our programmes are going. And then we will start to publicise to individual tenants when we look to do improvements in their homes. So we were speaking only this week with the tenants' panel around getting that information out to people so they understand when works will be done. So we've still got a bit of a way to go. It's something that Annalisa's pushed for a number of years, that tenants do have that basic information. I mean, we've got to be careful because we don't know where budgets are going to be, et cetera. But that is currently still our aspiration, that people do know.
Okay, councillors. Vicky, thank you very much indeed. The recommendation at the bottom of your, what is page three of the Yellow Pages, in other words, the first one that you turn over, is comment on the progress. I think we've had comment and observations. Certainly, I'd like to thank the tenant volunteers for the time taken to complete the evaluations and the assessments, which I trust were useful. We agreed to support mobilisation of the contracts and we would like future post-implementation progress reports on all of the contracts. Are we content with those recommendations? Thank you very much, councillors. Let's move on to number seven. Council, House Pride and, Pride or Prejudice? I was almost quoting the wrong book. Councillor Townsend, would you like to delight us?
Thank you, Chairman. This has been a really good collaborative piece of work between officers, members of our tenant panel and also councillors. And I would like to start with wholeheartedly thanking everyone who was involved in the task group. And there was a real enthusiasm to attack the project within what was quite a short timeframe and with a deep desire to get to the core of the issue of stigma surrounding council housing and to ultimately improve the lives of our tenants. In September 2018, the Green Paper, A New Deal for Social Housing, came before this committee. And it was felt that members should try and establish the extent and causes of prejudice experienced by our tenants, as well as identifying areas our tenants were proud of, hence the title Pride or Prejudice. Officers and members of the task group have worked really hard to gather the evidence. And we were delighted in the end with the response rate. What became clear very early on from these responses was that there was stigma. However, we discovered that people also generally perceived social housing positively and felt that it was a valuable and a diminishing resource. It was also clear that people were not aware of the eligibility criteria for council housing or about the allocation policy. We gathered data through various sources. Tenants were invited through the post or email to drop-in sessions, which we held across the borough and members also attended. These sessions were really valuable because it allowed us to question tenants and find in their answers, look at them in a bit more depth. We could question them quite a lot. And we also had a tenant survey online for those people who couldn't get to the drop-in sessions. And another separate survey for members of the public, including councillors, our own councillors, members of our own staff, contractors, and also the citizens' panel were involved as well. And you can see the split of the non-tenant people on page 37 of our pack. Whilst we acknowledge that there were limitations in our findings and that all age groups were not perhaps equally represented in our data gathering exercise, we feel that we have collected some really useful data that could provide a firm basis for further research on this topic. Again, I must add a huge thanks to officers and in particular to Yasmin, who took all of the data as well as all of our thoughts and comments and constructed this final excellent report in what was record time and with good humour at all times, despite a myriad of track changes. On page 71 of the pack, you will see that we have 18 recommendations, ranging from reviewing housing services to communications, as well as improving the outside appearance and maintenance of our housing. You will also note that we are building on the excellent work already carried out in the Affordable Housing Supplementary Planning Document, which is already included on tonight's agenda as well later on. We recognise that these recommendations are wide-ranging and we believe they will go some way to tackling stigma, empowering tenants and improving our services, as well as promoting Waverley as a landlord of choice. I hope that you feel you will be able to endorse these recommendations. Thank you.
Councillors, most of the more verbose councillors were on your committee. So I think you might get away quite lightly at the moment. But councillors, questions, comments? Councillor Follows?
Yeah, I think hence 18 recommendations is probably the veracity of the councillors' vote. Firstly, just a second, what councillor Townsend has said. Thank you extremely to Yasmin and to Annalisa for everything they did on this. To sit and listen to myself, councillor Townsend, councillor Seeburn and councillor Coburn to collate all of this stuff together, go through what must have been hundreds and hundreds of track changes and some of the, shall we say, slightly nitpicky comments on data, particularly from councillor Seeburn and I, I think is a fantastic effort. It does, in my view, confirm the original question that brought this through. There is definitely some stigma that people are feeling. It also brought to light a host of other questions and other issues which I found particularly interesting. It showed me the demographics of the borough are not quite what people sometimes assume them to be, particularly around election time. It is also interesting to find out that most people thought that the threshold for eligibility was much, is very, very different from what it actually is. So we highlighted a few things there. I think also just on a practical level as well, it also highlighted some areas where we've got some data issues post-GDPR, where it's skewed towards certain areas that we need to resolve. Actually, for many other surveys that we may do to come, it opens up a huge number of things on that that we can fix. So yeah, it was my first time ever on a task and finish group. So if they're all like that, then that's fantastic. It was a genuinely cross-party effort and well done to councillor Townsend for chairing. It was fantastic. I think it was very good. Commend all the recommendations. It was really good. Thank you.
Councillor Ellis?
Thank you, Chairman. I would agree totally. This is a really useful and an important report. It's excellently presented and understandable. I wasn't part of the committee that looked into it and I'm sorry in some ways that I wasn't. I wouldn't wish to be in any way negative, but if I could just ask a question. Quite a number of occasions in the report, the importance of making social housing more accessible to all eligible groups is reported. And I accept that. But in view of the number, the huge number and unacceptable number of people we have on our waiting list for such housing, and I wouldn't wish anyone to be denied to get on the list, how, I don't, not quite sure how the word, how positive approach is this? What can we do to actually improve that situation?
Can I just say that I'm going to hand over to Annalisa to explain, but there has been a reduction of people on our waiting list actually. So against that backdrop, I'll let Annalisa then explain some of the details, which might then answer your queries. Thank you.
Yes, as councillor Townsend explained, there's been a reduction in the number of people on our housing needs register. And also within the information we got from people throughout the survey, is that people felt that there wasn't any pointing applying because housing should go to those in greatest need. So even though somebody couldn't afford to buy or rent themselves in the borough, they felt because social housing was such a precious resource that they shouldn't take it up and it needed to go to somebody more deserving. What we want to do through this is actually raise the profile and encourage people to apply. And it's very difficult because we haven't got the housing now for them. But unless we get a true number of those who aren't being able to afford or rent within the borough but have got jobs here or want to have jobs here or want to remain here, then we're not going to be able to be in a position to put a business case forward for a bigger development or more social housing. So it's a little chicken and egg, but we need to show that social housing is of value and it's for a lot of people in society. And we can increase that number and then we've got that evidence and that support to build hopefully new homes and maybe change some finances potentially.
Councillor Seeburn?
Thank you, Chairman. This work was pushed through really quickly because we've got the constraints of some elections coming up fairly shortly. And Yasmin did a wonderful job in managing to get us to the finishing line because I think there was far more work went into this than the time warranted. On the basis of that, there's going to be more work to be done by the new administration, the new housing ONS committee, whatever it looks like. And to that end, one thing that's missing from either both the report at the start and the general report is there's no list of the members that participated in it. I think it'd be quite useful just to have that so that whoever's on the hook to follow up this knows who to chase, to avoid reinventing the wheel and to, you know, capture the learning that's gone into it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I was actually looking for that very list myself. So I think that's a very, very good idea and a valid point. Anyone else? Any more comments?
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to say thank you to every member on the group and thank you to Annalisa as well, who definitely provided a source of, a sort of backbone when I was struggling with my report. I think I called her probably a record of about five times in one hour at one point, asking her millions of questions. And I also wanted to plug scrutiny at this point as well because I think this study is an example of the excellent impact that ONS can have. And I'm very happy to hear, councillor Ellis, that you would perhaps have liked to have been on the group or had some involvement because that's really sort of why we do this, why we do scrutiny. And I've really enjoyed working with such an enthusiastic and constructive group. So I'd like to reciprocate the thank you to the group. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Ellis?
Sorry, if I could just come back very briefly. Thank you. I have actually been on two previous groups. I would heartily endorse the fact that overview and scrutiny is working really well with these particular task and finish groups. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I won't stagger through all 18 recommendations, but I'll move you to the third page of your yellow main agenda, where the main recommendation is for the Housing Overview and Scrutiny Committee to note the report undertaken. I think we might actually make it a little broader and say thank the participants for the report because I think it was a fantastic thing to get done, particularly in the timeframe. The Pride or Prejudice task and finish group, consider the report, I think we've done. I think we can remove that from the recommendation. But endorse the recommendations contained in it. I sincerely hope we will be able to do. Is that agreed? Thank you very much, everybody. Okay, on to item eight, Housing Service Plan 2019. Nora Copings is going to lead on this, I believe.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a very brief word of introduction from me. As members are aware, every autumn, as part of the budget setting exercise, each service prepares a proposal of objectives and projects for the new financial year and service plans that will be presented tonight, a reflection of this work. This year, in order to align the plans, not only with the new corporate strategy that was implemented last year, but also with the medium-term financial plan, the service plans include proposals for the three years ahead rather than just one year as it was done in the past. This change should enable a clear project management, especially for the projects which are kind of multi-year projects and a better accountability on the team level as well. It is worth noting that the plans are living document and there will be further improvements and refining happening as we go through the process to reflect the business needs going forward. They are used as a managerial tool for performance monitoring and will continue to inform the members on delivery of the progress through the corporate performance report, which comes to this committee on quarterly basis. That will be all from me and I will pass on to Annalisa to tell you about the details.
Thank you. So as Nora said, this is a three-year plan. So as Nora said, this is a three-year plan and it was a good opportunity for the housing service to take stock of where we are and look to the future. So while we were developing the plan, we took details from the corporate strategy. So obviously, we need to, everything to line up. We looked at tenant feedback from our STAR survey and events we've had and also took on board staff views about what's important to them in the next three years. Also fed in national information, particularly from the Green Paper and the Rethinking Social Housing, Chartered Institute of Housing paper that we've presented here and things that have come to Housing ONS and we've acknowledged that are issues that we want to look at. So we've created five strategic themes in our service plan. I think the housing service plan is slightly different to some of the other service plans if you're on any other committee. We've taken a definite strategic view of where we want to go and these five themes give us a structure for continuous improvement over the five years without bottling us down into a very detailed project plan. Underneath our housing service plan, we will have team action plans and the KPIs that come to committee quarterly. So the operational day-to-day things will be reported through the team management, but we thought it's important for you to see the strategic view of the service and not the nuts and bolts and day-to-day activities. But what we have is a golden thread from the corporate strategy to the housing service plan to those team action plans and performance information and then into individual staff's performance agreements. So there's a very clear line through that. So what's in the plans? We could write essays on what we want the housing service to do, so we wrote essays and then we cut them down and put things into themes. So the first theme is that we're financially robust. If we don't have any money in, we can't provide any services. So we need to make sure that we've got at least £2 million reserve. We've got our HRA business plan, the Housing Revenue Account Business Plan. As you know, our tenants' rents pay for the landlord services, they pay for the housing service. We've spoken already today about the new asset manager, so we've got a strategic asset manager in post. We need to make sure we've got a comprehensive asset management strategy. We're also looking to further develop our value for money strategy and also make sure we've got resources available to build new homes. So that's kind of looking at the finances. And then if you want to think about the team detail, the day-to-day activity will be about collecting that rent to make sure we can deliver on those strategic themes. The second theme is to meet the needs of residents and this is something that's always been very important to the housing service. And then particularly with the Housing Green Paper, it kind of reignited some of that work. So we want to develop an understanding residents' need project. So we've got tenant engagement at the moment, we're collecting bits of information from tenants on responsive repairs, different transactional satisfaction surveys, but we want to try and pull that together and have a more comprehensive strategic view because there's no point in listening to tenants if we don't act on the information they're giving us. So we really need to unpick and understand the needs of residents. And on a strategic level, we've got that with the housing strategy and our housing improvement policy as well. Thirdly, we want to look at the people in the organisation. We want to have professional staff who are delivering services that meet the needs of residents. We've recently engaged with the Chartered Institute of Housing and become a corporate Gold Star member with them. So there's further work to be done on that. And also to look at the training of our staff, develop a human resources action plan and as you've mentioned, how are we going to get those technical people in post? We need to have a strategic view and a vision about how we're going to do that. Fourthly, we want to be an effective partner. We can't do all this work on our own. We need to make sure that we're working with other statutory agencies and we have a homelessness strategy and a community safety strategy that will help us deliver for residents across the borough. And fifthly, we want to develop the customer experience. We've had a lot of focus in the past on customer service, how we do something, and actually we want to broaden that out to how you experience the service you deliver. It's about continuity of service and how people feel and they want to do business with us. And it's always an ongoing issue with tenant engagement. How do we get people engaged with us? Unless they're having a positive experience with us and getting something out of it, they're not going to turn up to a meeting or fill in a form. You know, we really need to develop that further. You'll see that we've actually got two service plans, even though Hugh and Andrew and I and the whole of the housing service see ourselves as one service purely for administrative purposes and chain of command, that plan has been split into two. So you'll see that Andrew's name is the top of one and Hugh's is on the top of the other. But we do have five common themes that we, as a vision for the housing service and the green actions you'll see are cross-cutting across both services. And just to note, finally, Andrew has recently taken on the responsibility of safeguarding for the local authority, so he's got an extra outcome on safeguarding actions and initiatives. I'm happy to take questions.
councillor Seaborn.
Sorry, beg your pardon. Did you catch what I was trying to say? Outcome four on both of the plans. I'm just struggling with the wording there. It's a few extra words in there, I think, could make it a lot clearer to the reader as to exactly what you're trying to achieve. So I understand as far as attaining nominations, but then it just, there seem to be some verbs missing with case studies and joint events. So perhaps that could be just looked at to make it slightly clearer. And then on dates. Objective or outcome 4.2, for instance, you've got to develop and maintain effective partnerships and then you've got an end date of 2020 rather than 2022. I would have thought if we're going to maintain, it probably should go for the whole life of the plan. Going the opposite way, there are some one-year targets here, but I wonder whether you could look at reducing the period of the objective so that it's carried out before the end of the financial year, so that actions arising from that objective to be carried out in the subsequent year are in place in time to get into the budget. Because if you've only agreed that by the end of the year, the reality is that the next year might not be very effective in terms of delivering them. So I suggest that might be a worthwhile thing to look at. It may prove to be too much of a challenge, but I think it might be worth looking at. And the other point I had, objective 5.1, it says effective mobilisation of new property service contracts. It doesn't say what we're going to do to ensure effective mobilisation. Most of these start with, you know, a verb or an imperative, you know, implement the digital transformation, but 5.1, it just starts with effective mobilisation. Yes, we want that, but what are we actually, what's the objective to do to ensure we have an effective mobilisation? Thank you, chairman.
Do you want to come back or shall I let councillor Follows loose first?
Just really quickly to thank you for those comments, as it does say, draft. So I did want your comments, so those are really useful. I think I always go to default to the end of March with the hope that sometimes those things will be done before then, but I don't like to overpromise. But I take on board your point about making sure that we've got financial arrangements for the following year if there's arising actions, so that's something we can review.
councillor Follows.
Thank you, chair. Let loose, there's one question and an easy one probably. Being a slight sucker for punishment, I attended the Environment ONS last night as well and one of the things that came up there regarding the planning peer review was actually retention of staff. You mentioned about ensuring that you recruit capable professionals. Is there anything about retaining those staff once you've got them?
Yes, so there's a piece of work being done corporately on human resources, sorry, brainwashed. And so what we want to do is create a housing service human resources strategy, looking at retention, all those things, yeah.
councillors, any more questions, observations? As you so wisely said, Annalisa, it's labelled draft. Did you, sorry, did you want to say something? No? It's labelled draft. The recommendation is interesting. It's recommended the Housing Overview and Scrutiny Committee considers the service plans. Well, fine. And makes any observations to the management team, fine. And any policy recommendations to the executive? Do we want to do that with a draft report? Just a question.
I believe that is just a generic recommendation, so I think it's the, at this stage, there is no any policy recommendations that you need to make as a overview and scrutiny committee.
Okay, thank you. So we'll take that last little bit out of the recommendation and assuming there are no more questions, I think we have made our representations to the management team and very few they were too. Must be a very good report. Okay, thank you very much. Let's move on to nine, housing development update, which I think is yours, Andrew.
Thank you, chairman. Yes, just last committee meeting, it was felt that it would be good to have an overall update on the development programme rather than simply focusing on Oxford Ridge. So we've done this as a kind of tester for you to see whether committee members would appreciate this approach. It isn't so detailed, we haven't got the Gantt charts and the financial information. That can be provided offline if any committee member would like that. Rather than go through individual schemes, I just want to highlight one or two things. At the bottom of page 93, on site, at last, the community rooms are being converted into dwellings. It's been, this project's been a little bit of a slow burn, but we're on site now, going great guns to complete by April. Site A, Oxford Ridge, the contracts are now signed. Thaycom client are doing work behind the scenes and you'll see things beginning to happen on site in April. Thirty-seven new homes, it'll be the largest new build development that the council has done, just highlighting that. And then over on page 96, a new project for us, bringing forward four sites in Chittingfold. We've started intense liaison and consultation with the tenants in the way that we did at Oxford Ridge. We've learnt lessons on the ridge and now we've gone in with letters, meetings, personal invitations. The Chittingfold neighbourhood plan event occurred over the weekend, we were present there and had a steady stream of tenants and local residents coming, asking questions, wanting the sort of clarification and assurances they need. We have another meeting on the 14th of March to follow up. We've had pre-planning advice on the four sites and hope to submit for planning later in the year. So it's a bit like a mini Oxford Ridge, but in Chittingfold. And then just the final thing I want to note, chairman, if I may, for the committee is the Amnitz Place scheme at Cranley. This is new to us, it's a new stream of delivery. The first time as a council, we've taken units under a section 106 agreement from a developer. One of the things that we've found is that housing associations at the moment are not keen on taking any number of units less than 10. We are and we've been able to negotiate with Carla Homes to acquire five homes. Three of those will be shared ownership. Again, a new model for us, new build shared ownership and we're developing a policy for that, something I think that this committee will be wanting to look at in its autumn season. Hopefully, some of you will still be here then to do that. And so I just wanted to highlight that because in two ways, that's new. Acquiring units under 106 and introducing a new new build tenure, interesting that we were speaking earlier about the needs of the borough, those who don't want to go on the housing register or don't feel they can. And there is an increasing bandwidth of people who actually earn too much to go on the housing register, but they don't earn enough to buy a property in Waverley. And this kind of low-cost home ownership model is the thing we do want to promote and something we want to see an increasing delivery of in the coming months and years. So chairman, that's really all I wanted to highlight. Very happy to take questions from the committee.
councillor Townsend.
Thank you. Just on page 94, the pre-development, the Oxford Ridge, I just want a clarification. Is that the net game of homes or is that, is that the net game on those numbers?
No, that isn't the net game, that is the total.
Okay, thank you.
So I need to go back and just work out what the net game is.
That's okay. I just wondered whether it was the net gain or not. And the only other thing is that with the Chittingfold, I know that the, obviously we're charging an affordable rent of 80%, which is the maximum we can charge. And I presume there was no positive way that we could do this with charging at a lesser rate than 80%?
Thank you, councillor. We may well find ourselves doing that. We had a situation with the Nursery Hill site in Shamley Green where we were going to charge 80% of market rent or the local housing allowance, whichever was less. And it was found that those who were eligible for those properties and in need of those properties couldn't afford that. Now, when the Homes and Communities Agency introduced affordable rent, they were very rigid, 80% or local housing allowance, whichever is less, but really you had to push the 80%. There's a lot more flexibility around that now. So we went back to the Homes England, we said we needed to reduce that rent to make it affordable and their comment was, well, it needs to be affordable, do what you need to do. So there will be some flexibility around that. We've worked out the initial appraisals on the basis of 80%, but there has to be flexibility going forward. We set those rents. There's no point in us building houses for people that can't afford them.
councillor Follows and then I'll come to you.
What I was going to say, chairman, was that the government do seem to be turning the tank around in terms of social rent and we can now bid for social rented grant funding, going back to how it was, which is very welcome. Thank you, chair. Certainly wish we could tell developers to stop building houses that nobody can afford. That would be a very good message to communicate to them. I just wanted to say two things. Firstly, I think the consultation events on the ridge are going very well in terms of how they're being managed. Wanted to pass on thanks from certain residents, particularly regarding the consultations, I think it was on F and, is it FNG or ENF? I forget which, the latest two, because it gave a lot of certainty to those residents who for a long time were not sure whether their houses were going to be renovated or demolished. They now know it's going to be a little while, but they now know what's going to happen, which is fantastic. I'm also glad that you're employing that mechanism elsewhere in the borough because it seems to be really good at getting engagement. Also good because we discussed at Gollum Town Council when you visited us several months or so ago, before Christmas it might have been now, I think actually, about slightly exotic ways of acquiring other houses to use. And so it's nice to see in Cranley that that's a slightly exotic way of acquiring some houses. So it's good that we're going in that direction. Thank you.
councillor Goldsmith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. After all these years and years I've been on housing committees, at last, the meaning of the word affordable means affordable. I'm very pleased to hear that you went back and people are listening at last. I can now say to someone, I know what affordable means.
councillors, any more questions, observations? Recommendation is to note any comments we've had, I think. And this is an update since January 2018. And it is saying here, delivery of well-designed, sustainable and energy-efficient homes, which I think is excellent. We are producing the best homes out. So thank you very much, everybody. Item 10 is draft affordable housing supplement planning document consultation and I think it's back to you again, Andrew.
Thank you, chairman. Yes, pleased to have Matthew Ellis here from the Planning Policy Team. If you have any questions that I can't answer, I shall hand over to Matthew. So thank you for coming, Matthew. Yes, it was a good thing for the task and finish group, for the Pride or Prejudice stigma group to have access to the draft, affordable housing planning supplementary planning document, get that the right way around in a minute, and to be able to see that and see how it fitted in to the whole aim and objective of delivering the best quality affordable housing in the best way that we can in the borough. This is a planning document, it's a draft, it's a working draft and all that we would ask the committee to do this evening is to endorse the draft going out for consultation. It'll be consulted on exactly in the same way as any other strategic planning document and will go on consultation between and will go on consultation between May and June this year, hopefully to be adopted in the autumn. Really, I don't wish to say too much about it. There may be questions which I or Matthew are very happy to answer. Most of you have had a good gander at this, I think. And what we've done is worked hard over the months to try to give all the guidance and direction necessary to developers and housing associations, to warn them that there are hoops they must jump through and they are going to deliver the affordable homes we need, and also to give guidance so that we can actually see that delivery and quality in place, because it's about delivery and quality. And also those occasions when really viability does show us that on a particular site, it can't be delivered in bricks and mortar, but we can take that commuted sum, that financial contribution in lieu and build up a war chest to help fund affordable housing across the borough. That's quite an important part at the end of the document. So that's really, Chairman, all I want to say. Matthew may have things to add if you need a more specific planning input.
Councillors, do you need a more specific planning input? Any questions? Councillor Townsend.
I would just like to say, we have looked through the draft before and it's a really excellent piece of work. And I'm glad to see that we've also referenced now within the document about the design standards and the specifications which we worked on previously. And I'd just like to say how great it is to see the design standards being used for this document and also the input from the Pride or Prejudice work that we've done and how everything is all coming together. And it's really, really nice to see. Thank you very much.
Councillors, any more observations, questions? In that case, if I can take you to the recommendation. Note the scope and themes of the draft Affordable Housing SPD. Happy? Provide feedback, which I hope we have done. And recommendation three, if we remove approve and put endorse, the draft Affordable Housing SPD to go out to consultation. Is that agreed? Thank you very much indeed. Let's move on to housing performance report, which is the height of the evening. My favourite authorus, Annalisa.
Thank you very much, Chairman. So you've seen my reports before. So this is the performance management report for quarter three, which is October, November, December of last calendar year. Draw your attention to the performance information that's in the corporate report on page 33. So if you recall, we have the corporate performance report and towards the end of that, you've got all the juicy information from housing from page 33 onwards. So looking at the key performance information, we have 12 indicators over the housing service. And we met all but two of the targets for performance in quarter three. Just looking at the information that's in the corporate performance report, you've got a commentary from both heads of service about the performance of the team in those three months, giving you details on the range of work that's been completed by the housing service, including the repossession of a home following a closure order due to drug dealing. You've heard already today about the mobilisation of the repairs and maintenance contracts. That's a huge piece of work that we've been going through in the last quarter. Monitoring an issue of Legionella in one of our senior living schemes. Supporting the housing overview and scrutiny task and finish group with the council housing Pride or Prejudice project. And we also held a home swap event in November as well, where we invited tenants to come and talk about moving and potentially meet other people who might like to move with them. If I look at the key performance information, the re-let performance is something we produce for you every quarter. Sixty-one homes were let during quarter three with an overall average of 21 working days. The team are bitterly disappointed to have just missed that target, having had such a good run over the last year and a half. However, if you do look at the mode, which councillor Seaborn introduced, that the mode average was 10 days. So we can take a little comfort in that. We did have a range of issues which had an impact on the average this time. Two homes took over 55 days, which is just not right, not appropriate, and we're taking steps to resolve that. And that was due to the need for specialist environmental cleaning. Some particularly challenging homes that had been left in a severe state of disrepair. And it was unsafe for any works to be completed until those homes were cleaned. And indeed, I think one of them had to be deep cleaned at least twice. So you could use your imagination about the type of property that was in. But please do take into consideration that that was one out of 61 homes in the last three months. We also had a property that was verbally refused six times. So people bid on choice-based lettings and we give them a phone call to see if they want to go and have a look. And unfortunately, although six people had said they'd like the property, when it came to it, they said they didn't want to go and look. So that one took a little bit of time. And also because we've had the interim period of the announcement of the new maintenance contractor, there was some operative capacity issues. Some of the subcontractors were uncertain about the future of their work. But those have all been ironed out now and people have got to the position where they're clear about who MPS are and what we're going to do going forward. Looking at the affordable homes, we've added some additional information that the committee requested about the percentage of affordable homes on each planning application that had been agreed over the last quarter. So I was really delighted to see, because I had no idea what this might look like, but only two of the eight schemes that were given permission in quarter three did not have the 30% affordable housing requirement to them. So that was really interesting. And the two that didn't meet the target were because of very specific circumstances. In Manor House in Godalming, it was because the property was a vacant dwelling to start with. So there's some technical planning rules, which I wasn't aware of. So there's a nationally set formula that reduces the amount of affordable homes that are required on a site. So that was one of them. And the second one was Chert Place needed an independent assessment after the applicant's viability appraisal. And unfortunately, the independent assessment mirrored what the applicant had said. So planners accepted the outcome of that. But we do get two shared equity homes on there. Looking at homelessness, the team have made great efforts in implementing the new prevention duties. We always expect a bit of an influx over the Christmas period and arrangements were made to have emergency accommodation and really delighted to say that that accommodation wasn't necessary over the Christmas period. Also, within quarter three, it was the National Rough Sleepers Count, which was taking place in October and November. We held our count on the 14th of November and identified two rough sleepers in the borough. However, these individuals are known to us, have been provided with advice and support and are reported not to be interested in the accommodation options that we can offer them. So it is more of a choice at the moment. Looking at rent collection, we've exceeded the rent collection target again, which is great. If we go back to the service plan, if we don't collect the rent, we can't provide any of our services. And we've got 3,700 tenants in credit on the rent accounts, which is really good. Universal Credit was rolled out to new applicants in November. This is having an impact on our rent arrears, but the rent accounts team are working really closely with those tenants affected and managing to get new payment plans with those people. And then finally, on the key performance information, looking at responsive repairs. For the first time, we've seen a dip in the overall satisfaction. If you remember, it's normally first-time fix we're talking about. And I'll say, but overall satisfactions meeting targets, so that's okay. And this time, we've met target on the two other indicators, but not the overall satisfaction. This is potentially due to the challenges of demobilising and remobilising the contract. It's something we are keeping a close eye on. And anybody who expresses any dissatisfaction with a repair through their volunteer survey, we contact immediately. So I'm hoping it was a one-off. However, I do think that it was a particularly high target that we set last time. It's quite challenging. So we just wanted to bear that in mind as we go through the mobilisation process, that there's a risk that we won't meet that challenging target for maybe a couple of quarters. I'm happy to take any questions on that information.
Councillors, questions, observations? Councillor Townsend, followed by councillor Seaborn.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. On the additional details on point 14, the graph, it was just a query over the Little Acres Cranley. Do we mean Little Meadows? I went, where? Oh, so have we got?
I'm being farmed, I'm not sure.
Yes.
But certainly, Little Acres, I would have to check.
Okay, that's great, thank you. Because I couldn't think of where Little Acres was in Cranley, but it might be one. Not in Cranley, though? Okay.
I will.
I did wonder if it was Farnham.
Okay, that's great, that'll answer that query. And the other thing was that I noticed on point 21 that we've got 3,700 accounts in credit and that the 1,100 accounts in arrears. And I just wondered if that had gone up or down and due to the universal credit rollout, would that be, if it had gone up or down? But I just wondered if you could clarify that, please.
So I mean, it does go slightly up and down each month, depending how many weeks are in that month. But generally, we are at a steady state. But the universal credit is starting to kick in. So the universal credits do have an average, the ones that are in arrears do have a higher average rent arrears than tenants who are not on universal credit. Number of those tenants already had arrears before they went into universal credit. So it is beginning to have a slight impact. It's not making the overall figure dramatically higher at the moment. So it's something we're really carefully watching now in terms of those particular cases. I mean, tenants do have the chance to get the prepayment so they can pay their rent as normal rather than in arrears. A number of tenants aren't taking that up, so they are naturally going to be paying in arrears as well. So we need to monitor that kind of situation, is how many are not taking up the payment in advance. So yes, it is beginning to slightly have a bite, not a dramatic in terms of the overall value, but it's something we've got to keep working on.
Thank you, Chairman. By and large, a really, really good, another really good news set of stories, so thank you very much for that. The one slight concern I've got is around just consistency of data. On affordable homes, item 13, the numbers in that table don't all tally with the performance indicators status on page 189. And, you know, at very least, I think we should be internally consistent. So somewhere along the line, those numbers need to be corrected in whatever goes on record for the future. Thank you.
Councillors, any more? The recommendation on the report says we agree any observations or recommendations about performance it wishes to make to the executive, i.e. haven't heard any. And considers the performance and identifies suggested scrutiny areas for the committee for a future work plan. I think we have generally been very encouraged by the performance and perhaps now is not the time to pop out with new scrutiny things. We'll let the poor people that follow us in May do that. So are we content with that, councillors? Thank you very much. Let's move on then to, let me move on to that one. Ah, garages. Who's leading on garages? Annalisa.
Thank you. So this is a report with lots of statistical information in for you that the committee requested when you had a garage report at the last meeting. So just the highlights, we're at a high of 70% occupancy of renting garages when the report was written. And the committee were interested in the split of that. So of those garages, 73% are rented to private residents and 27% to tenants. You'll see on the maps and the charts you've been given that there's a high density of garages in Farncombe, Farnham and Hazelmeir. And there's low demand for garages in Oxford. But I'll let you peruse those in your own wards at your own time. And there's an update on the Solar Light project that you'd been advised about before, but that's worked well and we're looking to roll that forward. Happy to take any questions.
Councillors, any questions? Or are we happy and content with this item and all your questions have been answered? Councillor Seaborn.
Thank you. So, you know, we asked for quite a lot more data. What's the so what from what you've learnt from putting this data together? I mean, looking through it, there are one or two places where there are a lot of vacant garages and next to no demand. Are we going to move that on to re-looking at the use of those particular plots? Because if we've got empty garages, they do tend to become a bit of an eyesore rather quickly and a burden to the borough. Would you like to comment on that, please?
I mean, I'd comment, I mean, we've been using this data to decide where to reinvest, do maintenance to the garages, other sites we've used to build new homes. I think some of these sites where we've now left that we probably, it's not feasible for us to build new homes. So it's around having another strategy on what to do with those pieces of land, is it to auction them off and things like that? So I think going forward, this data will be used for our next stage in this garage strategy that we've been working on four or five years going in terms of reinvestment and building new homes. So I know that's what we need to continue to do.
Councillors, more questions? Councillor Townsend.
Could I just ask, that's probably going to be a ridiculous question. But if I look on the Cranley, the garage sites in south-east of Waverley Borough, the map there. So let's take Glebe Road for example. So there's 12 garages, five of them occupied, seven of them are vacant and there's eight people on the waiting list. So could you just explain why the people on the waiting list haven't got the vacant garages? Is that? It's probably I've missed something.
I need to come back to you in some detail. The garages may not be, need maintenance on them or they're not in the places that those people want them in on the waiting list. So I can get that clarified and let you know.
Apparently, the Bentley wouldn't fit in the mini garage. Councillors, any more on garages? Recommendations are to note the progress on lettings, note the distribution of garages and to be aware a maintenance programme is being developed. Are we content with that? Okay, item 13. Annalisa again.
Thank you. So item 13 again is a report that you, a progress report and an update you saw at the last meeting about the recommendations from the Waverley scrutiny group report on mutual exchanges and downsizing to senior living homes. So you'll recall that the scrutiny group did a great piece of work and identified 20 recommendations for the council to improve the mutual exchange process. And I think it was, and a number of recommendations about the senior living schemes. I'm pleased to say that this piece of work's been concluded. We've completed all 20 recommendations that the scrutiny group put forward. We welcome the report and we've reviewed the communications, the processes and the IT we use for mutual exchanges. The website has now been updated with a greater customer focus. And within the papers you've got, you've got the updated mutual exchange policy, which has a greater customer focus about giving information to tenants about the mutual exchange process to help themselves select before they put in an application. Happy to take questions.
Questions, observations, councillors? Councillor Townsend. Councillor Townsend.
Just two quick questions. On page two hundred and six point four, it said that there are five hundred and sixty-three Waverley tenants registered on Home Swapper seeking a move. Over what period of time would that five hundred and sixty-three build up? And then my second question, I might also do two in one go, is I looked through the new policy for the home swapping. And just one thing leapt out at me slightly was about the, in considering applications, the council must be satisfied that no one is being unduly coerced or pressured into agreeing to the exchange. And I just wondered, just briefly, how that might be assessed, how that should be? Because that's very important, that people don't feel as if they are being pushed to exchange. So just those two, thank you.
Okay, so the tenants registered on Home Swapper. You're right, that could build up over time. But Home Swapper do review and make sure that people are actively seeking homes. So to the best of my knowledge, that is a true indication of the number who have registered and who are actively seeking a move. The coercion one's always a slightly difficult one. But it's like any of the work we do around safeguarding residents. It's about identifying anything that just doesn't feel right. Very early on in my career, I did a mutual exchange where the home, the tenancy was the elder relative in the house and other family members had moved in and they were forcing a move. But when you actually took the tenant out of the situation and spoke to her individually, you found out what truly she wanted to happen and it wasn't the mutual exchange. So it's about taking people and having a conversation with them outside of anybody who you feel may be coercing them. Also, I risk identify areas is if somebody's in rent arrears and all of a sudden their arrears are cleared and a mutual exchange application comes in. It's about, it's about those things that just don't feel right. And it's kind of underpinned by our safeguarding policies and rules.
I mean, I trust you implicitly because you've got a huge amount of experience. So somebody with less experience, is there some kind of checklist that they're looking out for certain pointers? A bit like a sort of a triage list at all? Because although with somebody that's got a huge amount of experience, they've got the past to pull on. But just I wondered if there is a list to actually go through to just check those things like, are they in arrears? Is this, is that, you know, that would be helpful. Thank you.
I mean, I think potentially it's something we could develop. But what I would say, it's something that underpins everything, the work that a tenancy and estate officer would do. So a bit like a surveyor going into a house would automatically kind of check the smoke alarm and the fire door. I'm guessing a tenancy and estate officer has that training and that understanding of checking those basic things whenever they're dealing with any kind of application or inquiry.
Councillors, any more questions, comments? Richard who?
Thank you, Chairman. Just based on experience I had a couple of years ago with a tenant, or a couple of tenants doing a house mutual exchange in my ward. Having gone through this, I think the words probably just about cover the concern I had. But in that particular case, an inspection was done before the exchange. It was under, the as seen process was fully understood. The property was actually in fairly dire straits when the new tenants moved in. But unfortunately, the carpets then got ripped up to reveal asbestos tiling underneath. And at that point, we turned around and said, well, you can't actually move in there. So the tenant had given up their property in Cranley, wanted to move to Bramley but couldn't get in because the work had to be completed, because it was safety critical. I think this document covers that and that we wouldn't have a repeat of that. But can you just give me the assurance or not that that's the case?
Well, the situation could happen again. But more and more of our properties have now had an asbestos safety check. So when somebody has made a mutual exchange request, we provide that information for them. So they'll know where asbestos is in the property. So hopefully, they would know it was under the carpet and they wouldn't do it. Or we knew it was under the carpet before and had already addressed the issue. So obviously, that's what you've got is the policy document, not the procedure and the ins and outs of the process. But what we wanted to do and what we're committed to is about giving as much information to the resident who's considering a move about the property they're moving into. So they can go to the inspection of the new home that they want to move to. They get that report so they can make an assessment on what repairs is a tenant's responsibility. And then be very clear that if there's any health and safety issues that have been identified in that inspection, that Waverley will complete those repairs.
Councillors, any more? Okay, thank you very much. The recommendations are one, that we support the updated mutual exchange policy. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Note the successful implementation of the twenty Waverley Scrutiny Group recommendations. Is that noted?
Noted.
Any comments or suggestions in respect of the council's responses and updates? I think we're fairly content with where we are, aren't we? Thank you very much, councillors. On to item fourteen. Update implementation of senior living. Which one of you is picking up that? Yes?
Final word from me for the evening. So this is an update report. You remember that Surrey County Council withdrew supporting people funding from April two thousand and eighteen. We went through a long consult, we supported Surrey's consultation exercise with the tenants in our shelter schemes. Following the known removal of that money, we had some key objectives about retaining a manager's presence in the schemes, reducing socialisation for residents, and to promote a good neighbour scheme for residents who are living within our schemes. We also wanted to develop the manager's role in making sure that they were marketing the schemes to potential tenants and also promoting the schemes as a community hub and doing more social activities. In autumn two thousand and eighteen, the senior living scheme manager went out and did a consultation with all tenants. And the tenants have expressed that they've noted very little difference in the day-to-day running of their schemes. They do miss the daily check. However, with the promotion of good neighbour scheme, the residents are checking on each other rather than relying on the manager making a call every day. We've also progressed with the development of the community hubs and some social activities. And there's some open days planned for the spring as well to help publicise the schemes in the coming year. It's not a great idea to advertise your senior living schemes in the middle of winter, although today might have been a nice day to do that. So just in conclusion, the transfer's gone ahead from sheltered to senior living with very little, no resistance. The residents are still content in their homes. And we look forward to developing the role of the senior living officers further.
Councillors, questions, comments? Councillor Townsend.
Just one little request. You say set open dates. Would you be able to circulate those so that we can put them in our diaries? Thank you.
Yes, they haven't been set yet, but you will be notified.
Okay, lovely, thank you.
Okay, councillor's recommendation is that we note the progress made in the outcome of the review. We support the senior living schemes in the promotion of services and wider community engagement. And we would like a progress report in twelve months' time. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. We're on to item fifteen, Committee Work Programme. Yasmin.
Thank you, Chairman. So if you turn to page two hundred, two hundred and twenty-nine is the beginning of the work programme, two hundred and thirty, beginning of section A. You'll notice there are some interesting items listed on the work programme for future meetings of this committee. In terms of moving forward, the committee, the new members returning or new members, we are working with the Democratic Services Team to deliver a comprehensive induction programme for all councillors returning and new, including covering scrutiny. This will involve a work programming exercise to develop the work programme for two thousand and nineteen, twenty. That doesn't mean I'm not happy to take suggestions now. They will be taken forward. But there will be, just so you know, we will be doing that exercise in the next few months. For today's meeting, members can find the progress of working groups on page two hundred and thirty-three, section B, and the outcomes of the committee's recommendations on page two hundred and thirty-four, section C. I'm happy to take any questions, any more suggestions for further items. But that's it from me. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillors, suggestions for further items for our successors?
I don't have any particular suggestions, other than the ones that we have just agreed within the Pride or Prejudice report. So a lot of those on there would be very interesting to put forward on to the work programme. Thank you.
Councillors, anything else? Fine, there is actually no recommendation attached to that, unless I've lost it. Councillor Townsend.
Can I just make a very, a little tiny query on the housing design standards? We did the design standards and we got to a stage where it was just one item outstanding on the, to do with the efficiency of the build. We were taking a fabric-first approach and we were looking at some of the, what was it again? It was, there was one item that was outstanding on those designs. And I can't remember it ever being brought back to actually sign it off. It was something to do with the missions, I think, thinking back. And I just wondered whether or not it was actually done. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. I do know what councillor Townsend's referring to. And so, yeah, it's not just we made up, but it's definitely there. And Louise Blundell, the officer who has been working on this, bringing these, all these recommendations and actions that were agreed in the housing design standards, she's aware of it too. I'm really sorry, I can't remember where it's got to at this point in time. But I will ask her, find out what the latest is on that and let everyone involved in the working group at the time. And, no, thank you.
Councillors, councillor followers?
Would you be able to share with us as soon as you're roughly aware of the future dates for members' training on scrutiny? Because I've been asked to share it with my wider group outside of the council. Thank you.
Any more councillors? Well, I think this is probably our last meeting before we have some fresh blood around. So thank you all very much for an interesting year, amazing amount of work done. I think we've really had an excellent cross-party cooperation, fantastic work from the officers. And thank you all very much indeed for what you've done and I look forward to seeing at least some of you again. Thank you very much.